Question is, I think it's been a little while, at least, I don't know, 20 or 30 years since we had a conversation as a community. I don't think that there's any harm in having a conversation. And I guess I think that about most issues. Your phone, yeah, sorry.
I'll go back to the strategic master building plan and engaging community members, leaders, parents, staff members, administrators, on what that looks like. For all of our facilities, not just the high school. And sometimes it's easy just to kind of focus on the high school. But what does, what does the master, the strategic master building plan look like for all of our buildings? When we put this together, when we see feedback input from our community and our staff members and our business leaders, what does that look like? Is it, okay, I mentioned it, Lakeview Elementary, one of the buildings that needs, needs attention? Whether it needs to be completely gutted and renovated and built back again? Or whether it needs to be torn out and rebuilt at a different location? Or is that the same concept that you want to use? Just one elementary building? Is it, do we want to look at, and these are just options. These are options that have been discussed in previous meetings in the community. Do we want to look at a building that is a K through three and a three through five? Or a four through six building? And bring multiple elementaries together away from the neighborhood concept? Which I agree, you know, back in the day, that was, that was the end thing to do. And it was great for communities at the time. But is it, is it the best thing for the hand of today? So the strategic master building plan and that community and what comes out of that is going to shake that. Be personal, in terms of building a second high school, two high schools, I'm not in favor of it. Do I think we need serious attention to our high school in terms of facilitating improvements, renovations, repair? Absolutely, absolutely, I agree. But what does that look like? I mean, Louisville-Reynoldsburg did a couple of years ago, they built a separate campus. So their summit campus in Reynoldsburg. You know, it's a standalone high school. They didn't split their community, they didn't split their school, but they have two high school buildings. And they completely renovated the old school. And they, they have unique STEM programs that are running out of that summit campus. So what does that look like for us? What comes out of that strategic master building plan? I can sit up here and daydream with you all day in terms of what, what I would love to see. You know, completing new renovations, because of the burger story on, on some of our building at the high school. Let's, let's take our elementaries and perhaps if it comes out of this, that we want to build a K through three and a four through six building and bring those together. And we can sit and talk about those things, and we can discuss those things. But for me, it comes out of engaging youth community in that strategic master building plan. And the other piece to that is, what's education going to look like when my third grader gets to 10th grade? What's it going to look like? In terms of congestion in the number of students that we have in our high school? What's it going to look like? I can tell you right now, he's not going to be that vegetable student in college. He's going to be that guy that wishes we still had that industrial tech program or CAP program. Because he's that builder. He's that mechanical engineer that we're going to see somewhere that's how Bill Holmes, Bill Rhodes, Bill Bridget, driving a dump truck, and hold those around. That's him. And he loves, how do we engage that part of the curriculum with our students now? That industrial techniques? Because not every one of our students are going to go to that sort of institution. So what's this education doing? How does that impact our building design as we move forward in the district?
How can the board balance the physical facilities needs and the academic needs of the Hannah School? Assuming the constraint of fighting land wasn't an issue, would you support the building of a new high school? Well, first of all, this is a great topic for an open discussion. Now, I've been listening to these comments about this, Mr. Phillips sits in the back. We advocate that open discussions, not practice sessions for the next formal board meeting. That's what we've been doing. So, yes, we do need open discussion group workshops to talk about things like this. We could talk about many things. Your Rats School is an example. Oh, and then to say, we can talk about it. But when it comes to this question, the physical, the master building committee, it needs to be stroked into facilities, and those are the people that are talking about how to build, what to build. And then another component, that's the educational component. What's education going to look like? And how do we combine it to, to design the facilities that we're going to need down the road? And we're going to need to take people outside of the community, experts that can help us write it. I don't think it's capable to do that in-house. That's the one, the question about the second high school. Under the current circumstances, my vote would be no. I voted when we had it. I wanted a second high school, four other big ones myself. So it wasn't a overwhelming support for a second high school right then. But my, my thought is, we have 2,600 kids in our high school. I think the whole intended board is about 1,800. So, you know, there's great new schools in the 1800s. We had to have about 3600 kids in order to justify paying for two facilities. So it would not be cost effective with a second high school. But what would be effective is if we took our current high school complex and redesigned it. And possibly, and again, just open discussion, maybe buy a school hall, a police department, or get conversations like that. Maybe we buy that land and develop a complex there where we might have a fraction of the money as an example. I'm just throwing the ideas out, I have to be careful of my ideas. Last week, I was hearing Jermsen down in building again in this space. So, yeah, you throw ideas out and then they get sort of confused. And people get a little bit of information and then tell everybody what you said. So, but to answer your question, I think the number one thing, it doesn't make financial sense to have a second high school. But I think we have tremendous opportunity to develop our high school around where they are now and put a complex in that the people will roll over the state of what they want to see.
The state has adjusted its requirements for arts teachers. Hannah School has a reputation for excellent arts programs. Can you share one of your philosophy on requirements for performing arts in the elementary, middle, and high school levels? And two, an example of how you have recently supported performing arts?
As far as being the first person to answer these questions, you have no time to think at all. So my philosophy on requirements for performing arts in the elementary, middle, and high school levels. I think that those teachers who are teaching in those subject areas should be licensed to teach in those subject areas. I kind of closely followed the discussion that went on at our State Board of Education related to the administrative rule change. And I guess if you're not familiar with some of those conversations that went on, the State Board of Education recently made, I don't, I don't know, my, expense of time is a little off right now. So I think within the last several months, less than a year ago, they obtained an administrative rule change related to requirements for school districts for teachers in certain specialty areas. But I think that, I guess, teachers who are teaching in those areas should be licensed to teach in those areas. An example of how you have recently supported performing arts? That's a difficult and an easy question for me to answer. My, so, my kids, I'll talk just about my own individual, my, my little family first. My, I've got three boys. They are all three very into sports, any kind of sports. But my oldest has his first opportunity, in his school building at least, to play a music instrument. So he's in sixth grade. He was really excited to have the opportunity to, to play an instrument, to learn how to play an instrument at his school. He had been kind of resistant to lessons prior to this, this year. But he really, he really got into it this year. And he, I think he spent about an hour and a half trying different musical instruments. So that's, that's my whole little family. But, it's hard, I don't know if any of you have ever stood up here answering questions for people, but it's difficult to think quickly and answer them to me. So I'm going to talk, I guess, about my larger family. I've got a sister who, she was involved in theater at my school. She went to college at Ohio Northern and majored in theater. She then had the opportunity to go to New York City. She spent 10 years working in the performing arts. And I guess my answer to this question of how I have recently supported performing arts? My direct answer to that question is that I've been, I think performing arts is something that's really important to my family. My sister works in the field. After moving back to Columbus, she began working at Shattlock Theater. That's her profession. My parents are also very involved in the arts community. And I've had the opportunity to set money to the Capitola to support performing arts in our, in our larger community. I think it's something that, if you cannot, I feel very fortunate, as somebody else has said, we've, we've not made cuts in those areas. And I hope that we never get to a place where we do have to make cuts in those areas. I'm sorry, thanks.
Yes, they should be licensed. And what I will say to that is how, you know, a number of things. Kevin De Hope, Rob Seegreak, Jeremy Langman, Cindy Macyozy at the high school level. We have, maybe I'm biased. We have probably, those educators that I just listed, probably the most talented performing arts, instrumental music staff members of any district across the state of Ohio. They are absolutely unbelievable. And if you haven't been to an auditorium or a performance of, whether it's a musical, a fall or spring, spring musical, fall play, listen to Kevin De Hope's orchestra, or Jeremy Langman's choir, or Rob Seegreak's instrumental bands. Unbelievable, absolutely unbelievable. So how have I supported them? Again, obviously, I, I guess I got, not to that, and that means on the instrumental music boosters board. So there you go, you got that one on me. But the opening, sorry. But I was, as the administrator of the administrative high school, I had to work with Kevin, and Rob, and Cindy, and Jeremy in terms of facilities, not only just sharing our facilities. Because as Lou mentioned in different areas, I mean, there's some, we have phenomenal programs, we have a lot of programs. And the fight for facilities is a challenge at times. But whether it's athletics, or whether it's our music or our performing arts, it was a sit-down conversation. It was a sit-down conversation to say, here's their calendar, here's what we want, here's what, how are we going to make this work? It was being collaborative. Because I believe that we respected each other. And I respected them to share them. And I, I'll just share some, you know, awesome stories. Will Trapp, Will Trapp's a member of Thomas Cruise, captain. Will Trapp is on the USP's national team and all fine for the Olympics. Will Trapp was a lead in our car ride. He was an athlete, and he went to college on an athletic scholarship when he was an athlete. I believe in a well-rounded student. It's a well-rounded student. So the opportunity to be involved in all of the activities and support them. Alexis Young, volleyball player, just won a OCC title, first time in a long time. Unbelievable thing. Second national champion of the state league basketball championship last year. Was one of the leads in the, in the spring musical two years ago. It's a well-rounded athlete. It's been respected in the programs and the leadership of those programs in terms of faculty. An unbelievable staff that we had across the state. So do I support them? Absolutely will support them. Would I ever want to see them cut? Absolutely not. Because Rob Seegreak's going to have one heck of a drummer. And that's my youngest son again, remember, he's not going to be a vegetable.
The state has adjusted its requirements for art, arts teachers. Hannah School has a reputation for excellent arts programs. Can you share your philosophical requirements for performing arts in the elementary, middle, and high school levels? And the example of how you have recently supported performing arts? Easy question for me. I don't know if any of you went to the Chambers Taste of Hannah. We had high school performing arts students there that did a great job. Our high school performing arts department is excellent. That was one of the programs I talked about. It's excellent. Now, could it be better? Well, sure. And these resources, we need to. But here's my question, your philosophical requirements for performing arts in the elementary, middle, and high school levels? This is going to cost more money. But think about how we educate our elementary teacher, our elementary kids. We pretty much educate all the same young people. We make cognitive people out of them. Some may have a tremendous talent in performing arts. How is the best way to educate them? Use that in teaching, the objectives we're trying to teach them. You see, not everybody learns the same way. I don't think we address that enough in our community. But there again, it costs money to do that. So, yes, we do need to do more at the elementary level. And I think the same applies to the high school. But we, when it gets to the high school, we're as good as anybody. And I think it's excellent. And not only performing arts, we need to do it in our program. We have the opportunity at the art gallery, if you don't know, I have an office on Mill Street. When you walk into it, you know, like many people think of it as an insurance agency, but you walk into it, it looks like an art gallery. The fact is, it is an art gallery. And we've used the high school performers to come down and entertain. And they're excellent. Every kid that comes in here is fantastic. So I don't know if that answers your question. I'm very supportive of it. It is something I wouldn't cut. I think we need more arts in our schools.
Okay, the state has adjusted its requirements for art teachers. Hannah's schools, Hannah's School has a reputation for excellent art programs. Can you share my philosophy on requirements for performing arts in elementary, middle, and high school levels? And the example of how I support it? So my philosophy is that high school programs are excellent because we have excellent theater schools in the middle schools and the elementary schools. I think our, our music teachers, our teachers in our elementary schools create that desire. And I agree that every child has something that best sparks them. And for many, they'd like to give a performing art, or a visual art, or becoming, and for someone that aren't in athletics, the, the, and they come there, they're there to express themselves and build a community. And that's very important because for teenagers especially, acceptance and being part of a group is paramount. So I absolutely support the arts. I totally respect our elementary, middle school, and high school art, arts teachers and all classes. I'm very impressed about how they collaborate with each other. I mean, we, you know, there's three people that run around the middle schools to be able to be the specialist for winds or, I don't know if I can say it right, the three categories that they're on is very impressive to me. We don't, we don't see that in other districts where there's that kind of collaboration, collaboration is never on. So I have a great deal of respect for all levels of our education. And then how I've recently supported performing arts? I am part of the Hannah, I'm instrumental music boosters. And last year, my daughter was part of the Alcomella Choir, which is an amazing pitching boost bus. And so I was very present in a few local music boosters there. Excellent programs. I've worked in the concession booths at the football games. And I think like 12 dozen cookies so far. And I have a cookie assignment for this Friday to support the instrumental music boosters. One final thing is, I was so, when I was PTO president here at Middle School West, it occurred to me that the kids are in at seven, some crazy time in the morning to be part of jazz band, or, they, they have a different group of kids that I saw in other areas. So we encouraged the PTO to do, to host a lunch, a recognition lunch for them. And Mr. Miller was tickled, he had never been asked to have that kind of recognition for his students. And so we kind of pulled together a simple lunch of Kane's Chicken, which turns out to be a hit with middle schoolers. And just thanked them because they do go around and support, support that's in the community spots. So it was a way to recognize a totally different group of students.
As a member of the school board, part of your responsibility will be to maintain and oversee the budget. Please talk about what it means to you to adhere to a budget and what history you have with budget management.
Part of your responsibility to maintain and oversee the budget, what it means to you to adhere to a budget? Well, Julio, help us out there. Overseen the superintendent and the treasurer. And again, I'll go back to the finance committee and engaging community leaders and experts in their field to help and assist and offer ideas and options that maybe perhaps Mr. Valideris didn't, didn't think of or, or wants to explore a little bit more. So as a school board, one, is to oversee that operation, have that open dialogue and open communication with Julio. The opportunity to seek information, to seek input from him on where we're going, what those projections look like. But have that strategic plan in terms of what it's going to look like come 2018. And make sure we're transparent about it. So that's what we need to do as a responsibility of school board, is want to oversee it. To make sure Julio's doing what he needs to do, to be fiscally prudent. And that we provide the information to you as taxpayers, as parents, and community members. The history of budget management at Lutz, like I said, 12 years at the high school. We were, it's, it's one of our self-sufficient programs, one of the few self-sufficient programs that we have in our district. We operate 100% on gate receipts and donations, sponsorships. So when you set a budget for 27 marching sports and 40 little programs, almost 1,000 athletes, so a third of our student body that's participating in our athletic programs at the high school, it's producing a budget. So at times, you have to look for those opportunities to seek the sponsorships and the donations to fund things. As I said, with the facility improvement project, it started back in 2007. We were able to accomplish that because of donations and sponsorships and corporate partnerships to fulfill that without using any taxpayer dollars. In my early years and midway through, our football program, I'll just be honest, our football program wasn't as successful as it had been. And football, in all honesty, from an athletic department budget, is our number one revenue generator. So if you combine bad Friday nights in terms of weather to a not very successful football program at the time, then the crowds don't come out and that impacts your bottom line. And prior to us putting in the paid participation piece back in 2009, 10, I believe, there was a year where rain Friday nights and bad football, you know, we didn't meet our budget. So Julio had to front some money to the athletic department to carry us to make sure we didn't end in the negative. And then that next year, we rebounded, we were able to pay that back to the district from there. So the management of the budget from, from the Hannah, from the athletic department side? Yeah, every year is revenue, revenue generated from our gate receipts and our paid participation. So that was my experience there at the event. Thank you.
As a member of the school board, part of your responsibility will be to maintain and oversee the budget. Please talk about what it means to you to adhere to a budget. One, what history you have on budget management? I think that's all I'll talk about. I will say this, it's not that we don't operate on a budget. We don't sometimes understand the financial statement that we receive as a current board member. And Julio would work hard to simplify that. And with this program, it's going to get so easy to look at. We'll be able to address expenditures and income on a current day basis, not a projection of actually what we're spending and what we're bringing in to make it easier so that we can work on an annual budget. My idea of annual budget is like anybody's annual budget at all. I make so much money, and my wife outlines what she's going to spend. And if I don't have enough, I've got to say, honey, please, put a little hand to cut out my wallet. Or I've got to go find a second source of income. It's that simple. I think we need to do an assessment, a complete assessment of our district as what we are spending on what programs. And begin to prioritize our programs. Because we can't give everything, you know, the federal government's supposed to give all our costs. And sometimes it does a mediocre job in a lot of ways. I think sometimes we do that. I'm not sure, I can't tell you for a fact, but I'd like to find that. So I'd like to see that assessment with this new program coming up. We're going to be able to do that fairly easy. And then we can adjust. Maybe we've spent too much money in this program and we're not getting out of what we want out of the program. But prioritize, so that we prioritize. If we've got $83 million coming in, we're rejecting that. We might, you know, reject our expenditures of $80, just give a little bit of cushion. But we watch that. And we know we're going to go over that. And that's why we have an annual board review of that budget along with the community sitting there in open discussion and listening to decide it. Do we want to spend more money? And/or if we try to get ahead of it? How do we develop these partnerships that will allow us to bring money through the education foundation? And if you choose, you can direct it to certain programs. But if not, you pledge to the foundation for the purpose of going into the general fund that will allow us to expand what we're currently doing. That's my idea of a budget. That's my idea of, let's buy additional resources besides tax dollars. I can't afford money for taxes, but I surely can afford maybe pledge resources. Thank you.
As a member of the school board, part of your responsibility will be to maintain and oversee the budget. Please talk about what it means to you to adhere to a budget and what history you have on budget management.
The budget for a school, I re-missed what I had to bring with me. But it's interesting because it's, has a lot of earmarked or sources of funds that have particular expense requirements. So I hope as people anticipate seeing the information on the new system openly, there will be something, you'll be like, whoa, there's a lot more line items coming into restricted and non-restricted. So keep that in mind as we, as we move forward, that it's not simply like our budget there. It comes in and goes into one bucket. There's a lot of that Julio has to balance as he's working through his budget. And that he will have to manage as a school board. What it means to me to adhere to a budget is very important. And as a school board member, I've been taking on a responsibility that you're placing on me to properly manage the school district budget. And so that you share your responsibility will not be taken lightly. You know, it's kind of the same sense that you might be more protective of what's not yours than your own. So time and attention will definitely get it to that. Budget management as a manager, I made one. I had a department budget to prepare similarly at CF Bank and at Benchmark Bank when I was in management there and managed the department, credit department. And most of those cases in CF Bank, it was the office budget there. So it's hard decisions when, especially when economic, outside economic reasons force your revenue down. How do you manage? your revenue down, how do you manage the expense side to keep it from being, um, an unbalanced budget, so to speak? And, um, it is not an option. You have to do it. So thank you. So I was, um, fortunate to have that opportunity to be at the school board meeting last week when the, with the new program, and I'm going to get this over the top, um, when the new program was presented to the board, um, at the board meeting. Um, I, I mean, it sounds like it'll be a great program. I think it's always good when you can provide more information, um, in more ways so that people who, um, maybe the, the way that the information is currently presented, um, related to the school budget may, may, I think everybody needs information there. So that the community, I guess, of this new program that is going to be used to, um, present all of the financial information is that it seems like there are lots of different ways to look at our budget, um, information so that it can be understandable to all of us. So I guess my, my overall philosophy when it comes to, um, the school's budget is that it needs to be something that's transparent and accessible to all of us, to board members, to, to those of us with limited authority and, um, and pay taxes. We need to all have a good understanding of what the budget is and how it works. Um, my only career is managing a budget. And the work that I do, um, I manage a, um, I guess, a program for the state. Um, I'm responsible for forecasting what my needs will be, um, for a two-year period. I'm not on a five-year cycle, but I'm on a two-year cycle. I'm responsible for figuring out what my needs will be, um, for a two-year period, making a request for the amount of money that I, I will need. And then I'm responsible for making sure that I stick to that amount that I was requested and hopefully granted, um, in my budget request. Um, and things change. I mean, just like they do in the school districts, um, things change. I came into the program that I manage, um, and it had been, uh, I guess, in a per, that it's not a program, but it's a program, the program had been dropped and I was tasked with building the program back up. Um, so it was pretty difficult at the beginning to, to come up with an accurate forecast of what my needs would be. But I knew that whatever I was requesting and whatever I was granted, um, I was going to be held accountable for sticking to that budget. Um, and I, and I was able to do that. I think that that's really important. Um, I guess the one difference that I have is that my source of revenue, it's not really a source of revenue, but my source of funding is a much more stable source of funding that we have, um, with this whole budget. So I do think that some of those new resources with the, um, program that's coming, I think that'll help all of us get a better picture of where that instability is, why we have that instability. Um, and the, the impact that I think that a school board can have on that is that the school board can push for that openness. And I also think the school board members, um, if they're able to come together on the issue, can make an impact on the, the source of stable funding that we do have, which is the funding from the state. I'm constantly getting waved off. Um, but if the school board members are able to come together, I think that that, and we're going to work with other school districts, um, I think that that's where we can have the biggest impact. Um, we can, we need to tell, um, those who provide the state funding that stable money is something that we need to face.
That is all the time I have for questions. We have a gathering around nine o'clock and eight fifty. Um, I'd like to thank you all for coming and want to thank the candidates for their time and their responses and paying a big honor fee. We want to all of you, thank you.